They can almost say anything and get away with it.
Yeah.
Everybody, Mike Summatt, please check your picture on the floor.
Close. Look at that. Tried to sneak in here without saying hello.
Good morning, Dave. Dave, good morning, Dave. John, good morning, John.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mike. Good morning, Marcia.
It's like, uh...
Yeah.
It's like the Waltons.
Yeah, we're just like the Walton.
Good night, Mary Ellen. Good night, Marcia. Good night, Mike.
Elizabeth.
Can you see Stephanie? She's going to text you around.
How you doing for that?
Oh, thank you.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
I'm recovering. I'm in recovery.
In recovery, yeah. Understood.
Well, once more to be sure.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 6, 2025. If you would please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reports from state and county officials. Are there any state or county officials with us this morning that would like to address the board?
You have us all running up here this morning.
All right, good morning. Sarah Vandenberg, County Clerk. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to remind everybody and let everybody know that voters in several of our townships are participating in a special election today. The election involves school bond proposals as well as renewal millegists for the fire, cemetery, and township operations in Woodland Township. Participating jurisdictions are Baltimore, Berry, Carlton, Castleton, Hope, Johnstown, Orangeville, Prairieville, Precincts 1 and 2 in Thornapple Township, Woodland Township, and Yankee Springs Precinct 2. Voters in Yankee Springs Township will be consolidated into Orangeville Township, and Thornapple Township residents will be voting in Kent County at Caledonia Christian Reform Church. Just a reminder that the polls are opened at 7:00 and will close at 8:00 p.m. And I want to extend sincere thanks to the voters who are participating in today's election and contributing to the democratic process in our communities. And additionally, we are very grateful, and we acknowledge the dedication and hard work of our election inspectors, clerks, and support staff to ensure the smooth and secure operation of the selection.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah.
Good morning, Commissioners. I didn't know whether to bring this up in public comment or officials, so I decided the officials because then I don't have a timeframe. This is the solar review for consumers that been ongoing. In the summer of '24, we began conversations with consumers regarding the proposed solar facility located in Johnstown Township, Berry County, and Bedford Township, Calhoun County. Historically, the Berry County Drain Commissioner has been responsible for stormwater reviews in areas of the county under the jurisdiction of the Berry County zoning, unless a local jurisdiction conducts its own. According to the zoning meeting minutes from September 23, 2024, we were directed to perform an administrative review because in the meeting minutes, it says motion by Matson to approve case number SP 122024 pursuant to Section 2302, Parts 1 through 7 of the Berry County zoning ordinance with a preliminary site plan approved subject to administrative review, which is supported by Hatfield. So they all said, we got to do an administrative review, somewhere along the line, and I cannot tell you who told us that we were supposed to build that into the stormwater review. So we started down that road. Prior, Consumers Energy requested to meet with us, Berry County Drain Commissioner and Calhoun County Water Resources Commissioner, to discuss the preliminary stormwater management plan for the facility. This meeting occurred on May 24th, May of '24. Following this meeting, Consumers Energy eventually submitted an application for stormwater review to the BCDC in August of '24. BCDC engaged its legal counsel and engineering consultant to perform the review of the facility. After reviewing the calculations, BCDC agreed to alternative stormwater management approaches provided that a stormwater agreement was executed by all parties. It is important to note that under Part 1-33F of the rules, the BCDC reserves the right to establish site-specific requirements beyond those outlined in the rules based on its review of the site plans and calculations. We provided to Consumers Energy in October of '24 a draft agreement. There were multiple exchanges between legal teams during this time. Consumers' legal team provided a list of items they stated consumers would not agree to. I do have the latest and greatest from 2024, and I have the list of things that they did not agree to, and I'll give them to you at the end. Since much of the review and the acceptance of alternative stormwater management approaches was contingent upon having a stormwater agreement in place, the BCDC may need to reevaluate the proposed stormwater management plan if consumers ultimately refuse this presented agreement. On Monday, April 28, '25, Eric, our county administrator, informed me that based on his and the county attorney's interpretation, the ordinance does not require the BCDC to perform the administrative review, and that Clark Hill was not responding. And I'll give you number three of all the back and forths that they said we weren't responding with. I'm fine with that determination. Also, Eric indicated he intended to issue the permit without the BCDC sign off, which, I mean, that's his choice. You know, he's the county administrator. If he wants to take it on his shoulders. However, I need clarification on who is now responsible for conducting the review. Is it Eric? Is it the county commissioners? Is it somebody else that we're going to bring in? The BCDC will not approve the proposed facility stormwater management plan unless the previously discussed stormwater agreement is in place in accordance with the recommendations of attorneys and consultants. As part of the stormwater agreement, liability insurance and bonding were required for the project. Even if the BCDC is no longer conducting an administrative review, we continue to recommend that these bonds and insurance provisions be maintained and provided to the county, including decommissioning bond and suggestions on item number four. Lastly, the review fees associated with BCDC involvement were to be charged to Consumers Energy, as outlined in the proposed stormwater agreement. Please clarify who will pay, who will be responsible for covering those review fees if we don't do our part. Part one, that is the limits that state there shall be an administrative review. Number two, that is our latest and greatest that we've sent to them. Number three, that is the list of back and forths that they said we did not, they told Eric, well, if they're not responding, well, let's see. The last one was 2025, '24, '22, 418, 49, 413. Should I continue? We know that they're lying about that. These are the things that we requested that they said they do not want to do. Consumers is not going to provide notice of construction, not a biggie. No ASBILs to tell what was done. No provisions that consumers will pay for the cost of these reviews. They, at that point, were not going to give us the MDSs for the panels to show that there's nothing wrong in the panels. They have given us MDSs now for the panels, but they have yet to give us what they're going to keep them cleaned with. They said they're not going to do any stormwater sampling. Anything runs off it, they're not going to take any sampling or tell us if there's any issues with it. They are not, they said they're not providing evidence of liability insurance. They are limiting their indemnification to only those claims related to stormwater management, not the panels. Consumers would be determining the amount and method of security. I think you guys are going down the wrong road if you don't get it. I don't care who does the review. You know, Eric can do it. David, you can do it. Anybody can do it, as long as they know what they're doing. But I don't want to see the county get stuck with another brown field. And we've heard too many horror stories of a lot of stuff happening, and if this solar thing goes down and they decide that it's not worth doing, somebody's going to get stuck with 1,000 acres that's had the top dirt stripped off, and we got this monstrosity there. Better be a decommissioning thing. So you kids have fun. Have a good day.
Does Eric have those documents?
What's that?
Does Eric have copies of those documents?
I can get them to him.
Okay. Please do, so we can review them.
They emailed them to him, but I'll give him 100 copies of everything.
Okay. Yeah. I'm a little familiar with it, but I haven't heard that information, so I'm curious to take a review on that as well.
Well, I'm not knocking Eric. I'm just saying, Consumers is pushing. They've also reached out to Calhoun County. Tommy down there and said, oh, sign this on the letterhead and saying it's all on Berry County, which I wouldn't recommend that for anybody to do because then now they're going to hold us responsible.
Okay.
Granted, they only got 40 acres out of 1,000, but I don't want to have a problem with another county, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
See you, kids. Thanks.
Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board for items on the agenda? Oops, Rich.
I was going to sneak in.
Yeah, come on.
Watch that, watch that, watch that. I was just going to tell you, watch that.
Thank you. I'll pass those around.
Thank you. All right. So Rich Timkey, Director of Berry County Community and Health. And based on some recent tragic events throughout our county, I wanted to make sure that all of you gentlemen and ladies have information to pass along. I know you're out in the community quite a bit, so you may or may not be aware that Berry County has had multiple suicides in a short period of time. So the information that you have provides our access crisis number. That's available to anybody 24/7, 365 days a year. The message that we want to continue to get out to not just you, but to community, so those that are also listening today, is that, you know, there is hope available. There is people, there are people available to help and support. What happens when you call this 866-266-4781 number is that one of our crisis staff actually will answer, will listen, will try to understand your story, and then direct services as necessary with you, the individual being, you know, a big part of that. But if you guys and ladies get out in the community, we just want to make sure that you get that message out. So if you are out and about and you hear of some situations or you're at some meetings where they're like, hey, we could utilize, you know, 50 or 100 of these, we also have pamphlets, then just contact my office and we'll get those to you to get to the different places you guys get. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rich. Additional input from state or county officials? Okay, limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board for items listed on the agenda? They do so for up to three minutes. Morning, Gary White. I just delivered a FOIA. It says, please provide full details and timelines for the repopulation and use of the old front of the court building, which is needed before you start putting money into it, which I don't believe is available. Halfway through the description of action, you see, this was completed, this is on the front of the court building over there. This was completed due to the desire of the Berry County Commissioners to keep the building and to plan for any necessary maintenance and improvements in the building. Staff have reviewed and completed review and have developed a five-year plan to, for completion of the proposed activities. The following improvements are proposed for 2025. Generation addition, this is, I'm not going to read them all, but generation addition for $80,000. That's interesting. Construction manager fees of the $490,000 are $96,800. Contingency fees are $74,200, which half of it is $37,000 for work and the other half is for design features. Then you have design fees of $45,000. So you have contingency of design features of $37,000 on top of the $45,000. This is in your packet. It concerns me that you're really going down this road with no details of what that building is going to be used for in its entirety. It's a 6,000-square-foot building on two floors plus another 3,000 in the basement for about 9,000 square feet. When you start doing, spending these kinds of dollars and you can't provide why you're spending these kinds of dollars, it's important to understand you have a jail to build, correct? That is a need over what is here described as a desire of the Berry County Commissioners at keeping an old building. It's a five-year plan, is what is described in here, and this $490,000 is part of the five-year plan. You've already had two stages, or three stages, depending on how you want to look at it, which included $182,000 for windows. So where is this project going? What are the full details of this project? And who's going to be over there? And is it a honest need or, as it says in here, a desire of the Berry County Commissioners? I'm just sitting here thinking, this has been a topic, and you've been putting $100,000, $200,000 here and turned over some property for some work that was done on this building. There's also water damage, which probably comes up with mold also. Is there any remediation of mold in the project? Has it been looked at? Just where is everything at in this? I don't think you're ready to pass anything when it comes to this kind of money with no plan. Thank you. Thank you. Additional public comment?
Okay. This is my first time, so. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carrie Essner, and I am a county employee, and I also am a member of the Board of the Association. And I am here just to let you guys know that we have heard about the funding that's going towards that old building, which we were in for front of the court for a long period of time. We are just seeking clarity on the proposed amount request for the updates on the old FOC building. Like what the gentleman before me said, what is the intended use of the building after the updates? Who is expected to occupy it? Where are the funds coming from? If this is public money, where can the Association Board request this information? While we were over there working, that building, where there were safety and health concerns that weren't addressed at that point. So the questions in our minds are, they're being addressed now, but why weren't they when it was occupied with county employees? Inconsistency raises questions about the priorities and fairness with continued turnover, high turnover and difficulty attracting applicants. How do we justify continued spending on the old FOC building? There are 10-plus vacancies in the trial court rate at this moment. I do feel that it's sending a conflicting message to the staff who are working hard under increasing strain. Shouldn't we be putting limited resources toward retaining and supporting the employees who are working tirelessly and committed to keep the courts afloat and run efficiently for the community? Investing in the people, not just property, is the surest way to maintain quality public service. We respectfully request that the proposed monetary requests be set aside during this time so that the Commissioners have the opportunity to hear from staff that are dedicated to Berry County, the judges they work under, and to save and utilize that money to make the trial court be the best in the state and where people will want to come to work and better yet, stay. Also, for the Commissioners to experience the workforce of the trial courts by job shadowing each employee or department to get a more appropriate understanding of the reason for the request. Thank you again for allowing me to be heard.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Additional public comment? Hearing none. We will move ahead with our agenda. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the April 15, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Don't move. Support.
Motion by Tunis and support by Hatfield for approval of the April 15, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Mashiah Rose, equalization in the L-429 tax rate request. I didn't see you back there. Good morning.
I was hiding. Good morning. So, yes, I'm here today to request approval and signature of the L-429 tax rate request form for 2025. Once approved, this form is then distributed to the local treasurers, which authorizes them to actually collect the property tax on our behalf as prescribed by the form. The mills on here come directly from the already-approved budget for 2025. However, those mills have been reduced. I've applied a millage reduction fraction, and that's because of Headley. Basically, Headley limits the amount of property tax revenue growth on previously existing properties, so new construction is taken out of the equation. Basically, it's limited to the growth of not to exceed the rate of inflation. So if it's estimated that tax revenue growth is going to exceed the rate of inflation, I reduce the millage to ensure that that doesn't happen. And so that's where you see the maximum allowable millage. So, yeah.
Okay. Standard procedure? We see this every year.
Yes. And on that note, I do aim every year to have the first week of May, I do this for all the taxing entities, so I send those out. That should be going out here in the next two days. So if you have anybody from the local townships asking you, where is that? Refer them to their email because that's where I'll send it.
Okay. Fantastic. Questions from Commissioners? Says pretty standard stuff. We see it all the time. We've already seen the charge, the graphs, all the fun stuff they put together for us. Okay. No questions. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 L-429 tax rate request for the levy of property taxes to be signed by the chairperson.
Don't move. Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Tunis and to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 L-429 tax rate request for the levy of property taxes. Did I say that wrong?
Yeah, that was me.
Campbell, support by Hatfield to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 L-429 tax rate for the levy of property taxes to be signed by the chairperson. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mashiah.
Thank you.
Next up, Jeff. Resolution for partial termination of farmland development rights agreement.
Morning, everyone. Jeff Kiesler, planning and zoning. We have a request to terminate a portion of, partial termination of a farmland development rights agreement. Essentially, a portion of a farm site was mistakenly included in the, in a former PA 116 agreement. That is now part of the Spring Creek Solar Project, so they need that half acre to come out so that everything is the way it should be. The Planning Commission voted on April 28 unanimously to release this parcel, and that's all I have, that's all the information I have. So any questions about that?
Well, it's just a half acre?
Yep. Yeah, there's a portion of a barn and I think a shed on the site, and, yeah, it just, it looks like it was just mistakenly included, so.
Been doing these for 10 years and never seen one of these, and now I've got two of them in a couple months, so, you know?
Yeah.
It's just what it is, but... Questions for Jeff? Dave, any input from the Planning Commission?
No, it was a fairly short discussion. You know, basically, we look at this as correcting a previously made clerical error.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners? The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-16, a resolution for partial termination of farmland development rights agreement with pre-existing structure in Section 28 of Johnstown Township, parcel number 08-09-028-007-30.
Don't move.
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-16, a resolution for partial termination of farmland development rights in agreement with pre-existing structures in Section 28 of Johnstown Township, parcel number 08-09-028-007-30. Additional discussion? Yes, sir?
Just a question on that. Not familiar with the 116. Is there any back taxes owed on that 1.50 acre? Normally, when you drop out of a PA 116...
I'm guessing if it was a clerical error, that it may not be assessed taxes, but Jeff, I don't know if you have any other...
Very possibly. I don't know. I know when, when people pull, pull a piece of property out, they, they can be liable for seven years of taxes.
Yeah.
But I don't know, in this case, that's a good question, that, you know, since it was done in error, I don't, I don't know about that.
Just curious if no taxes have been paid on it for seven years, and they should have been.
Correct. Yeah. I can check into that for sure.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good morning, Luella.
Good morning. It's that time of year again to kick off the budget process for the 2026 budget. The budget calendar is in your packet for you to review and approve. If you approve this, then we move forward. We're really looking at using the same budget manual and the same process that we've been using, so no, no changes proposed there. There's, if you look down the calendar there, in, in August would be when the Committee of the Whole usually reviews the recommended budget, and at that point, you might set a budget workshop, or you might also set a meeting where departments can come in and appeal the recommendation. So those are dates that can be determined by you all later, unless you want to set some dates now.
Okay. Questions for Luella?
I have a question, if I may. Can you tell me a little bit about, you know, you said you're going to follow your processes that you had in the past? Can you tell me about those processes? Is zero-based approach? Is it, you know, how do, how do you approach it?
So really, it's, you know, we, we send out the budget manual to the departments. That budget manual has a few questions that we ask them to answer about, you know, what do you foresee any big changes in your department, any big changes in legislation or revenue? And then that, that packet has, sends them their revenue budgets and their expenditure budgets, and they have like prior year data there to look at. So they, they kind of send us our requests, including any capital requests that they might have or any new positions that they might be requesting. And then what has occurred in the past is the administrator will review all that, and I would say typically with expenditures, that the line items, if they request an increase in a... in a certain line item, unless they have some pretty, you know, big explanation as to why they need an increase, those are generally just held at the same levels that they've been. And then, you know, it's just a matter of looking at the revenues too, and projecting those, and looking at past revenues, and what we expect, and trying to balance it all. So we do rely very heavily on, you know, what the past budget has been, and increases are granted very sparingly, I would say, in the recommendation. And then the board has the opportunity to, to review that too, you know, they want to make changes, or if a department comes in and says, well, hey, you know, I requested this increase, or I requested a position, and the administrator didn't recommend it, then they can come to the board and state their case before the board, and the board has the opportunity at that, at that time to, to change or to agree with the original recommendation.
And then how do you approach the, so if you have vacancies, you know, so Carrie's talking about these vacancies that we have, how do you approach those as you look at budgets for the next year?
We budget them based on the expectation that those will be filled, and I, I put together those projections, which I'm working on right now for, for the next three years based on who's in the position and what grade step or pay they're currently at, and, you know, if they're in a scale that has steps, you know, calculating their actual hours at every step. So it, it's very detailed, and if there's a vacant position that's budgeted as if, you know, I kind of look at, well, how long's it been vacant? Is it posted now? Do we think it's going to be filled this year? And then estimate, you know, like if there's a vacancy that just occurred in an apartment and they posted it, then when I put together the budget, I would assume that, you know, maybe that position's going to start in June or July, and then that's what I base the projection on. So we, we do account for the fact that there are vacant positions in the budget.
And since I'm new, I'm going to need to learn a little bit more about it. What's my best approach? Sit down with you, or who would be my best?
Sure.
Okay. I'll get ahold of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes.
So I, I'm trying to understand something about the cash flow. So let's say you have a vacant position that has not been filled in a certain department that has a certain budget. Does the money not paid to the employee that's not there stay within the county's general funders that's sitting in their budget and, you know, accumulating in whatever fund equity they have?
If it's a general fund department, regardless of, you know, what's in their line item budget, I mean, all of that, that money is sitting in the general fund. But, but yes, I mean, it would, it would be in their budget, you know, regardless if it's full or vacant. In the past, the, the board hasn't really gone in and reduced budgets during the year if there have been vacancies, and what, what occurs at the end of the year then. And this is kind of what has helped us with our funding mechanism that we've used in the past that you're probably familiar with, that we take any general fund surplus at the end of the year, and we recommend that those go to some of the special revenue funds that would fund vehicles, computers, those, those types of items. So that's what happens to that general fund surplus at the end of the year. And that, we, we have had traditionally fairly large surpluses at the end of the year, and it is largely due to turnover in the departments. That and the fact that we have departments that are very careful about their budgets, and they live within their budgets.
Okay, so I understand with the general fund, you know, I've heard criticisms that what to do with all that extra money, but it goes to these contingency funds, like the data fund, a vehicle repair, building replacement fund, I know it goes to these different funds. But the stuff that's not general fund, if it goes to, I'm not sure what you would consider this to be, but if it goes to another department that is not in the general fund, they would maintain that money that they did not pay an employee because it's an unfilled position?
Yes, it, it would just build into the fund balance of that fund. Now, we have a couple of funds where we've taken a look at and we've said, you know, we, we don't need those particular funds to grow their fund balance. So we have another resolution that you approve, that lets the auditors only transfer what is needed, if it's a department, that we have an appropriation from the general fund, for example, the front of the court. We have an appropriation from the general fund to pay a portion of that because they're only reimbursed a certain percentage from other sources. So that general fund appropriation that we budget may or may not get transferred to that fund at the end of the year, depending on if it's going to grow that fund balance. If it's going to grow that fund balance, only what's needed to maintain the fund balance that's there gets transferred by the auditor.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Yeah, putting together a three-year projection in this market right now can be entertaining. I agree. So, yes.
Just one comment. I'm taking this year as kind of a, see how the process goes, learn. We're not making any major changes, so it'll be a, you know, really a lot of conversations with department heads, you know, working with Luella to make sure we completely understand the process, and then if next year, we then tweak things if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. And the budget calendar looks similar to what I've seen in the past as well. Not a lot of significant changes when we go through September, end of August, September, October, for the public hearing to approve it, so that gives us lots of time to hear from those departments, especially being a contract year. It'll be interesting to see everything comes up, so, you know.
On that point, just real quickly, because it is a contract year next year and, you know, the following years, and we don't know what that increase is going to be for purposes of the budget, and, you know, this can change if, if needed, but for purposes of the budget, we're projecting a 3% increase in, in wages.
Still questions? Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2026 budget calendar.
Don't move.
Support.
Was that Bassett?
Yes.
Motion by Colton, support by Bassett to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2026 budget calendar. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Luella.
Hey, good morning, commissioners. Jeff, director of Buildings and Grounds, otherwise known as the sacrificial lamb.
I thought that was me. Before Jeff started, I just wanted a couple of things. This is, this project has been something that we've been asked to look at since I was hired. Actually, I know it was something that was on Michael's list to do before I was hired. And a couple of the, we don't have a defined plan at this point. Jeff will get into some of the details, but, and none of the resources that are being talked about for this facility would be used to support any employee activities, you're talking building rehab, one-time market interest, and some insurance proceeds to fix from the water leak. So just be clear, and I would say this to commissioners, to employees, if you have questions on any of this stuff, my door's open. Stop, been happy to discuss those things, so. Jeff, you want to take it from there?
Sure. Thank you, Eric. Well, yeah, this started before Eric was on board, but yeah, essentially, you know, we were asked to, you know, say, hey, we're going to keep the building, right? So we're going to, we need to just make some improvements to the building. And so through a process, even before we hired, or went out to bid for a architect or engineering firm, you know, we started that internally, and looking at that, and kind of doing some facility assessment needs and things like that. And, and that low-hanging fruit, as we call it, you know, we did some of that in-house, and we've continued to do that in-house. Because this is, you know, part of a, a small part of a 48-page facility assessment report. And so as that, as that transitioned, you know, we got to this point and said, hey, how do we prioritize? And I'll go into, I won't go into a lot of detail, but I'll answer any questions, but I do want to point out a few things, and that is that, you know, my main job is to protect the physical assets of the county. If we've got a building, whether I want the building or not, it doesn't matter, I've got to protect it and make recommendations to keep that building, you know, up to code, safe, secure, things like that. So some of these things, if you go down through here, and maybe not everybody's, I don't know who's privy to the 48-page report, right? But you look at it, a lot of these are code compliance things that we talk about. And the insurance thing, we had a water leak, we went through remediation, there is no mold, we did that right away, that's part of what, it's standard procedure, so, you know, I'm not, not even speak to that, but, so yeah, so I mean, as we look at some of these, others are, the other thing is, I always get a little nervous because we have to put a number there, right? Because we get a number from these folks, the architects and engineers, but they've got formulas they plug in for these things, you know. These aren't, they haven't gone out to every contractor and got hard numbers, because as you just pointed out about the budget, you know, things could change quickly in six months, not even three years, about costs. And so as we look at that, there's formulas they plug in, they know what it takes to, you know, square foot, to do carpet, to paint, things like that. So I don't get, because I've done it a long time, and I just want to point that out, I don't get too excited about, about numbers yet because they're going to be safe and they're going to plug that in, they're going to go a little high. That's what they do. That's what contingencies are for, that's what all that's for. So, so yeah, so as we look at that, you know, I just think, you know, I mean, again, somebody will look at, I'm going to point one out, replace drinking fountain for $5,500. Somebody say, what in the world? Well, what you don't know is, it's not up, again, it's not up to code, somebody in a wheelchair couldn't get to it, it's not accessible, so then where do you put it? There's a lot of design work to find some other place for it. So, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that, that just, you know, if you look at a, at a one-page thing, you're not going to, you know, capture and grasp. And so I just, you know, those, there's a lot of that there as we talk about these. So again, you know, we've already done some improvements. I've worked through the Consumers Energy Rebate Program and paid $1,200 to get a bunch of lights changed recently, LED lights upgraded that cost me $10,000 if I just had a contractor do it. So those are things we continue to do that we can do in-house, and I continue to work with my local contractors and folks I do without the assistance of an architect or an engineer, and getting things done that we can't do, you know, in-house and things like that. So, yeah, it's, it's been a process that I've been working on for a while even before Eric's been here, and, but we've got to that point where we say, hey, even if the building's empty, there's things that we need to do to get it ready for occupants. I mean, it just needs to happen, and we don't want it to deteriorate either, you know. You want to make sure, and that's why we did the windows. I mean, you know, you get, you had windows that are leaking air, and they're, you know, we're pumping, pumping cold air, and we're trying to heat the building, and that's inefficient, you know. We've got, you know, five different types of heating and cooling over there, all fighting each other and stuff, and that's not energy efficient. So I mean, there's different things that, that just need to be done, and we're committed to keeping the building, and, and so, yeah, that's kind of where we're at. So in a nutshell, if that makes sense.
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of those things. Contingencies are just what they are, they're contingencies. If we don't need them, we're not spending them. They're just put in there to cover the things you don't know when you open walls and you get into issues. You know, Jeff has mentioned the drinking fountain. Well, that's in a recess cubby right now that people can't get to, so that's got, that wall's going to get bumped out, it may involve relocating the drinking fountain. So there are a lot of, as you said, things to build onto that. As Jeff said, this project was fit out originally. Progressive companies were the low bid, so they've continued on through the construction manager phase, just like we've done with COA, and it's a very typical project. And these are the things that we felt that needed to be done before anybody could get in, and this is the time to do it before, even if you don't have a, hey, three months from now, you know, I know mental health is looking for some space potentially. You say, hey, mental health, whatever we do there, they're still going to need. And there are things in there, I know the generator's been brought up, I think from a public building standpoint, if we don't invest in generators, we're crazy. I think we should have that in each of our public buildings, courthouse should have one. We need to operate no matter the weather. We're in Michigan, it's ice, we know severe weather happens, and we, we still need to operate. So that's just things that, as we look at facilities, that I think we'll prioritize. Once again, we're here to give you a recommendation. If you say, hey, let's step back, let's not do this, let's not do that, Jeff and I will roll with it, but this is our recommendation at this point.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few. So what has to be done right now? Obviously, we've had a problem with water leaking or something, right? So I mean, that's got to be addressed immediately. What else has to be addressed immediately that, from a maintenance point, for the fact that that building's been sitting empty for three years, and it's, it's not good to have a building sitting empty, right? So I mean, what needs to be deemed, done priority-wise?
Sure. As I talk to, as I talk about code issues, right? If you're going to, if you're going to bring employees in there, I've heard from an employee that used to be there, we're bringing employees in there, we're going to bring customers in there that we have to service and provide, you know, services to, we've got to be code compliant, right? And so, you know, handrails, stairwells, you don't think about a drinking fountain as a, as a need, but it's, it's there, it's a code-compliant issue. And so these things that are, that are code-compliant, you know, making sure you have fire-rated stairwells and, you know, and handrail replacements that are code that aren't right height and things like that. So, you know, and again, the carpet's really rough, you know, the paint, I mean, those are things. There's interior work, it was part of the window project, you know, you don't want, you don't want window guys, you know, painting, painting, all right? So I mean, that wasn't part of that scope, so we know we have to do some patching. I, I knew that, that was upfront. So those are things that need to be done. You know, I've got some HVAC stuff, even though it's not the most efficient, you know, we keep it maintained, we keep it going, right? So I mean, we're, we're all right, but, but if you put somebody in there tomorrow, you're going to have some code-compliance issues that, that need to be addressed. And so those are the things that you focus on, and there are those things that, and again, you know, fire extinguishers, signs, and we're doing all that internally, we've already ordered all that stuff, and I'm not going to do that until it's all painted. I mean, there's things that have to happen there that, you know, again, things like that to get, keep us code-compliant and safe. You know, and again, the, the security system, depends how secure you want to be, and how, you know, how beefy you want to go there, but, you know, there's an old security system or part of it, and so, and keep your folks safe, right, in today's environment, so.
And that's not functional really at this point. So I think you look at the things, Bob, on your, on this list, really the only thing that I would say is, it's not a desire, I mean, the generator, I think that's something that if you didn't want us to do right now, we could hold on. I still think that's something we should do. The HVAC chase from roof to basement, before anyone gets in there, we're trying to plan for a more efficient building in the future, and that's only, that's only if necessary with the HVAC chase. Explain that.
Again, if we go in there with that chase, it's potentially, we'll have to do that, but we have roof penetrations now. As I, as I get in and I work with these folks, we might about to use existing roof penetrations. But again, we want to put that in there in case we can't. Again, I've got five different systems working against each other, so if we put a chase and get one main system and get some, not to get all technical, but get a system that all works together, then that's what we need. So, yeah.
But I mean, can we, can we approach this kind of like what we did with the COA? I mean, okay, so $12,900 to construct a wall to close up the second floor. You know, I'm not, don't really know how big the wall is, but it seems like a lot of money to me. Okay, so I mean, is it something that we can, like, instead of going through this and paying $96,000 for this construction firm, or whatever we're going to do here? I mean, we, we basically did for the COA, kind of no different than what Frederick was doing. We sat right through that whole process, and everybody came there and said, okay, yeah, can do it for this. I mean, the low bidder got it in most cases.
So I think this is, would be similar, Bob, from that standpoint, is progressives serving as Frederick in this case. So if we had, you know, three people interested in doing the carpentry work, you know, we could have them come in and we could talk to them at that point. But that's, that model we're trying to use moving forward.
And that's to add to that, again, you know... And next to add to that, again, you know, they're like our construction manager, get it, we're going to bid it out, again, that's why I just said earlier, I don't like seeing those numbers on the one-page thing, because there's a lot of detail along with that, and this isn't going to be the final number, right? And so, um, so there's a lot of behind the scenes that have to happen there, and, and again, doing our due diligence by the things that you're suggesting is exactly what we'll do, because it's like, we're not just going to say, hey, we know it's going to cost $12.5 for a, for, you know, to build a wall, you know what I mean? There's, there's a lot of detail to that and stuff like that, and it's going to bed out, and we're going to make sure that we got everything up to code and that everything's the way it should be, you know? And again, using, again, some of these things that I'm doing and using local contracts that I can do in various of my own contractors, but there are other things that need a professional engineer stamp to pass inspection and things like that, so that's what, that's where we utilize these folks, so that they have all that, those credentials, that they can do that. Can I answer your question?
Yeah. Mr. Bassett?
So, I, I'm trying to understand the scope of the project in that, are we just putting the building up to code, or are we truly preparing it for occupancy, and if we are, for what occupancy? So, I mean, I've done construction projects my whole career, and so you get it all fixed up, and then somebody comes in and says, oh, I really don't want that wall there, I want to move it over there. To me, as I listen to you, I hear that we need to do, like Bob said, what do we have to do right now to get this building up to code and prepare it for future occupancy? But I don't know about a couple of the items in here if it needs to be done now. That's just, as I listen to you, that's what I'm hearing.
Sure, I mean, just to speak to that briefly, is, yeah, obviously, the code thing is a, that's a no-brainer, right? It's scary, so we know that. You're right, you don't want to go in and just do this all up with all kinds of fancy stuff, and then you get a tenant, I mean, I, I worked in, in the private sector, I worked in managing multi-story buildings, and, and you go in and you build a shell, because then you rent it out and lease it out, but then invariably, that tenant moves out, the next tenant, we, we gut that thing, right? I mean, for the most part, they want walls in different areas and different things. But again, there's things that we can do to get it prepped, and again, if we, the way that building is structured, as old as it is, and some load-bearing walls, you also don't have the flexibility, as much flexibility as you would in a, you know, building, I'm talking about a newer building, in the way it's built, and so, I think there's some things, we, we go up to that point, to your, to your point, we go up to that point to say, all right, we know that this needs to be done for, for code and for occupancy, right? And then we say, all right, now, you know, do we need to build a wall here, do we need to build a wall there, do we need to do that? We can still do that, we can still do some improvements, I believe, without, without, you know, doing things twice if you will.
And I think some of it is also, I mean, there was a commission vote in '23, I believe, that gave the administration direction on how to move forward with the build, design the, fixing the building up for what uses. Basically, it was county office space. So, with that, I mean, it's our building, so it's going to be designed for offices. So, it's not like we're going to throw in, you know, just a apartment and renovate that and make it a workshop and things like that, so as we're moving forward, looking at these options, that's the direction. Now, someone may want to come in and knock a wall out later, that's, that can be figured out later. But, I think there's nothing on here that's, once again, generator, if you want to pull now, we can pull on that. But there are some things that we just need to get out of the way before anybody's in the building.
Well, and I would even question, like, your access control, what's going on with security systems today is going to be way different if we're occupying the building a year from now. So, I don't, I don't know, and maybe there's some things that are code.
Access control on this is just like four locks on certain four doors.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, they're basic, yeah, your basic, you know, entrance, exit, you know, security type thing and stuff, so that we don't, yeah, if somebody wants, depending on the usage, if somebody wants to get detailed and different, then, then you get a system, but when you, but you've got to think about that, you've got to think about, all right, we're going to just do some exterior doors and some basic stuff, but you want to buy a system that's buildable, so you don't have, again, two different, two and three different types of systems. So, that thought process, just something that is expandable, and you'll get a product that's, that can do that, so.
And everything that's in there is 2000-ish timeframe, when it was renovated, 2000, 2001, so IT's gone through it and looked at and said, the bones for IT are, they can work with, but like that, secure door system, there's no more cards, there's no more, it doesn't really even work. So, it's like, well, we got to do, we got to do something to replace what's there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Campbell.
We're looking at, looks like close to half a million dollars. We have no, we have no mark of what, what is going to be in there yet. It just seems, something seems out of whack here, we're, we're trying to propose a new jail, and we're putting half a million dollars into a building we don't know what it's going to be used for. I, I, I think this has to be looked, re-looked at, streamlined this to what is absolutely necessary for the sake of the building, but to vote on something for half a million dollars, there's no way I'm going to do that, there's no way. That's all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Gaddy?
I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Campbell, is that it feels a little bit like we're putting the cart ahead of the horse, in that I would like to know more detail about what the office use of the building is. I know we talked about it in general terms, that we, that we thought office use was going to be needed from the county, and that we were constrained in our, in our current office space. But I would like to know a little bit more about what, you know, what the projections are, what departments are we talking about moving over there before we make a big investment? I think all of these are fairly in line with what we would need to do to make offices over there. We talked about a wall, so that we could still use that open space below, and you, you can't have people walk in that hallway upstairs to access the, those spaces, but I would like to know what, what offices we're planning to put over there.
Mr. Smolker?
I think that it needs to be brought up to code. I personally think that the, I know the offices I'd like to see move as a starter, and I believe that the wall up there, like Catherine says, has to be built, so if we want to, we could rent out, maybe upstairs from the downstairs. And that stuff has to be done, so we can do that. It's set vacant long enough, let's get, the offices over there, that need to go over there, and the, possibly, if we're going to rent it out, let's get it started.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield?
I guess my main question, I, I'm in favor of going ahead with everything that we need to do to make sure that we're up to code and have a basically sound building over there that we can fast-track at some point when it becomes necessary to do that. I think, yeah, I question looking at some, a lot of the items on there, whether or not we couldn't contract that out ourselves, as opposed to paying a construction management fee of, you know, 20% of the project.
I agree.
So, the, I think some of it right now is Jeff's staff, he's down people, working straight on staff that manage the project. We haven't been able to replace one of his staffs, so Jeff and Eric basically are taking a lot of that on and running with it. So, that, from one thing, and I think there are design standards in there that they're better suited for, they can put the staff at it, they can put the bid process through, and we'll work with them on all that, but I think they're in a better position to do so than we are right now. As a, and so, if, if you're, there are things you're not comfortable with, generator, pull it, access control, we can do that, probably without too much damage to walls and things like that, but I would think the rest of it is pretty basic items that need to meet, is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, we need to go back and say, hey, these are the code, these are the code ones, you need some data to back that up, it's in the report.
Yeah, we know that.
We can do that, if that's, if that would satisfy. I would just speak again to Commissioner Tunis and Commissioner Hatfield, I, I work with contractors, I've done it for years and years, and there's things to do, but again, some things need a professional stamp and, and code things, and whether it's a structural engineer or something else to go in there, and you don't want to, you don't want to, those are the things that you don't want to be on the hook for if you think it's going to be all right structurally, or think it's going to be, so those are the things that, that I, I like the professional stamp on, right? And I can identify those things and say, hey, yeah, I have no problem, I work with contractors, that's what I do for a living, right? I mean, and so, I'm fine with that, if you can get them to respond, which has been tougher the last few years, but that's a whole nother story for another day, but, so yeah.
Okay. I, I have a similar concern reading through this, looking at construction manager fees of around $100,000 plus design fees of $45,000, and then you add contingency in there at 74, I understand that when you're doing renovations, you never know what you're getting into when you open walls, and there are changes in there, so contingencies can be higher on there, but, you know, you're talking, you know, $150,000 on a $490,000 project, I guess maybe a little more when you take out the $74,000, so, and it might be helpful as well, because I'm kind of agreeing with Commissioner Campbell at this point, where we have a lot of things to consider going forward, but I agree that this building, we need to start the process regardless of what happens to it, there, we have to start the process. I wouldn't mind taking a look at these line items, and I don't know if that would be meeting with the construction managers or looking at it and questioning some of this stuff, because, you know, having built a house recently and, and putting a generator in for $8,000 for a building that's a little bigger for $80,000, I know prices have gone up, but it's, it's, you know, commercial versus residential. There's a lot of things, and I know when we mentioned HVAC, putting that chase in from the roof, although it's $36,000 for that expense, the other indication is that you need HVAC or we need a, we need to rework the HVAC at some point, which can be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It is.
Not $36,000. So, this is, as you said, getting the building up to code, but I think it would be helpful for myself and maybe for other commissioners to put eyeballs on exactly what we're talking about here before we move forward with this.
Sure.
I read the report, the 48 pages, I know there was $950,000 in, in items that could be, you know, but I think it's also important to clarify what the use is going to be going forward, and I know there are, there are several ideas, there are people that have requested space, there are people interested in that space, and I know it's not doing us any good sitting there empty, so, as we have heard, so, but it is our space and it is in our campus, so we need to protect that and figure out the, the best use going forward with it, I'm just not sure we're at that point yet. But I would like to put eyes on some of this, and either we talk to the construction manager or just put eyeballs on some of this stuff before we go forward with it, so.
Jeff and I'd be happy to meet with whatever commissioner would like to walk the building, talk about the improvements. I think we're, we're the first step on that, happy to do that, and I think my last comment is, I remember the building rehab fund is, and the Artbras fund is where this, that would come from, would not be something we would use on a new project, as a renovation. So, we wouldn't use, unless we were just going to do a small renovation at the jail, which, we don't have a small renovation at the jail to do, these are funds that we wouldn't use for that project, to remember. So, we're not taking general fund dollars for this, it's very targeted dollars that you've saved over the years to invest back in your facilities. And I, I, hey, I'd love to give you, I have scenarios in my head right now, I have scenarios written down that I'm working through, but I think the biggest issue is just getting ahead, no matter what use we have, we have these, I hate to use the word low-hanging fruit, but some of this is, just things that we need to knock out before anybody uses the building.
Yeah, yeah.
But I completely understand your point, I, I would love to say, here's my recommendation, let's go. But I'm trying to be slow, make sure you guys are all where you need to be, and, but like I said, Jeff and I are available to meet and talk about these issues.
Okay. Commissioner Tunis?
I think we are going to need to move forward with the code compliant, though, that's just something that has to be done. Okay, you're dealing with the, with the water damage, okay, that's going to have to be taken care of soon, okay? Plaster's going to start falling off, and.
It already is.
It already is, right? I mean, so, and you've made sure that there is no mold.
Yeah, that was, that's the first step, so you can do that right away.
So, what was causing, did you have to put a new roof on, or what did you have to do? What was, what was causing the?
No, the cause was a supply line on, that's, supply line on a toilet in the building.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Let's go.
Okay.
We don't have any kind of alarm system over there, I literally got a call from 911 dispatch into my office at 5 till 5:00, and I said, hey, some passerby said that it looks like there's like a waterfall down the inside of the windows. It's like, what? There's people drinking a lot around here. So, I, I whipped right over there, and I go, oh my gosh, yeah. So, yeah, it was on the second floor, and it just went down, so it kind of, you know, flooded some offices all the way down the basement, and, but yeah, we got a company in right away to remediate that and dry it out, and the whole process that it's standard for a flood like that.
And we have insurance proceeds coming on that for it.
Okay.
Is there some way you can bring us something that, for cost, close to, for what needs to be brought up to code?
Yeah, we can identify, again, as I told you earlier, these are formulas, right? These could change, you know what I mean? They plug these in, so you have to get, we can get direct, direct quotes to say, hey.
There's two things on there, as I mentioned, access control and generator that aren't code issues, and then the construction of the walls, so practical, everything else on there is code-related, and it's been called out in the feasibility study.
Yeah, I guess I'm just used to seeing construction manager fees or those fees, architecture fees, you know, in the eight to 12% range, and this seems to be higher. I know the project is smaller, but those seem to be high to me.
I'd like to see us do that, our, our, almost on our own, sit down with some people and walk into a room and.
Jeff and I.
Are you volunteering?
Yeah.
Jeff and I will strategize on that and discuss and.
Of course I'm volunteering for that one, that's right up my alley.
Commissioner Smolker?
Just for my own general thing, is there any of these on here, hard bids that won't be changed? They all will be bid out, even the construction manager?
No, the construction manager is already.
That's solid.
That's, well, that's a percentage based on the work that's accomplished.
Yeah, that'll change if there's less work, obviously, that's basically.
Okay, so, really, they ain't any of them solid if we change the work. And when they're bid out, do we get to okay all the bids, or does the construction manager do it?
Under construction manager form, usually, they come up with a number, and then they pick the low bids, obviously, we have input.
Yeah.
It's like Frederick, Frederick picked the people, I mean, with input from COA and the committee.
But the committee was on there, there will be a committee for this one.
That's something, I mean, it would be Jeff and I right now, but if there's commissioners that are interested.
I've always.
I believe there is.
As the end user, as a customer, I've always had a, you know, I make a living of arguing with architects and engineers, right? And saying, no, I've dealt with these folks before, I don't want them to bid, I don't want them to do this work, this is why, and so, you always, as that, and you, I've always had the ability, yes, we hire them, right, to perform something for us, so yes. Now, they may say, well, we advise against that, but it doesn't happen a lot, but I mean, we have discussed, but yes, we have, we have, last word.
I think that example, I think, was, you know, if we have a local contractor that's close in price to somebody from out of town, you could say, hey, look, I get it, but we want to use that local contractor. I think we've done that in the past.
And I'd like to see what Commissioner Tunis says, bring it up to code.
Well, do we know what the balance of the building rehab fund is?
Not off the top of my head, but I'll get you that number.
Okay. And, I mean.
We're, the reason why is we're still in the middle of the audit, so, we give you an estimate at the end of the year, but we won't know until after the audit's done.
Yeah, I mean, that's what that, that's what that special fund is designed for, for projects like this, and we have used it in, in my 10 years for various projects, for rehabilitating improvements, just like we did with the friend of the court when we moved them from that building over to the courts and law building, so, I mean, it is there, that money has been set aside, and that's the surplus from budgets that are spent, put into those accounts, so the funds are there, it doesn't affect the jail, but it is something that I just think that I would like to put more eyes on and get some more input before we move forward with it, so.
Okay.
You know?
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It does not affect the jail, but it does affect the jail. It's gonna affect the perception of the community. When we put a half a million dollars into a building, we don't know what we're gonna do with, regardless of what fund it comes out of, the perception is gonna be wrong. This jail's gonna be a big project, we're gonna need every, everything we can to make this happen, so as, as we do the necessary things that have to be done here, we gotta keep up with normal business too while we're pursuing this jail project, but we gotta keep in mind that although financially the funds are there, I don't think it's proper to say it does not affect the jail because it will affect perception, as it already has today, so, just something to keep in mind.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I agree with you, Bruce, 100% on that, but we also chose to keep the building and the building has to be maintained, okay? I mean, it's not doing any good just sitting over there. Empty buildings, whether it's a barn sitting out someplace with nothing in it, or I don't care what it is, they, they don't do well sitting empty, okay? And there's always maintenance issues on them, and that's, you know, I think if we go to the point of what has to be done right now, then we can move forward from there, so, and like, like, like the chairman said, we can sit down and take a good look at, at walking through the building, get ideas and go from there, so.
There's not a motion on the floor, so we don't need to table this or postpone it, but by consensus, we can agree that we need some more information or want some more input on this going forward and make a decision on this at the future as we develop a plan for it, take a look at some of the things that need to be done, and we'll move forward, so.
If there's any commissioners that wanna go over, talk about, let me know.
Okay, perfect.
I will.
I know Bob, I figured you'd be the first one.
Jeff, I appreciate your time and your information and your work on this, I know there are things that need to be addressed in here and we shall, so.
Glad to do it, thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you.
John, are you okay continuing to move forward with our audio visual? Okay. Eric? Continue on.
As we were looking at facility improvements, one of the things that we lacked is a really good remote virtual meeting system in the county complex, so what I did, I reached out to the MyDeal contractor, for those commissioners who don't recall, MyDeal is a state, basically the state holds contracts for a lot of items that, that they need, and then they make that available to local governments, if you join, costs us a couple hundred bucks a year, but it makes, it saves us more than that. They go through the RFP process, they get pricing for all these things, so I can go to the website, look up and say, we need tires, you know, we, we wanna buy a new sheriff's department car, instead of going out to three or four different places, the state's already done that work for us and they have the lowest price for those type of vehicles. So they have the same thing for meeting room systems, this is a company that I worked with, Marshall, when we did the same thing, we upgraded a room, we, we have needs for meetings with consultants, employees, training, where a system in the Titan Center would be extremely helpful. We have staff meeting where we have people who participate remotely that can't hear when we're meeting over in the courts, we have a very, it's a very, not powerful mobile system, shall we say, I think Sarah can attest to this, sitting in that room, Mashia, I think she's still, I don't know if she left, Mashia is remote to those meetings and she halftime can't hear us, so, I think other groups that, in the county that would use this system would be a lot of us, and so, we have a, a request to put together a new system for that room, so whoever uses it could access the system, it would, you know, it's microphones, it's a video camera, it's a new display, total's 9,175, that would come from the IT fund.
And we'll upgrade that room to be fully functional as far as Zoom meetings, whatever the case is, where people can.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because we do have several people that join us when we're doing our economic development, people are coming from different parts, so that is good to know, and we don't, the only place I'm aware of, you said they have that in the courts building, you also have it at?
911 and Health Department have it.
Okay.
Courts is very, not a very robust, shall we say, very, not a very useful system, I would, as I mentioned, it doesn't work as well as we'd hoped, so I think this is a great location, it's useful for a lot of our county boards, employee meetings, for example, the association can meet remotely with their attorney, the unions can meet virtually, we could, there are just times where, we need this functionality, and for, I think, a very reasonable investment, it would make this available to all the county entities.
Okay, and this is permanent installed, so?
Permanent installed.
Be fairly easy to use?
Yep.
Okay.
Questions from commissioners?
We've been asked about this over the years, since COVID, several times, we just haven't done it yet, so.
That's where a lot of the time, a lot of communities did, that's what Marshall did, coming out of all that, we upgraded four rooms, and it really is, well, they're easy to use, you take a laptop and it connects to the system, you can project, you can host meetings, it's very easy, and as we can put, continue on our ERP search, it's nice to be able to have that visual and share information back and forth, so.
Okay. If there are no questions from commissioners, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of a contract for $9,175.04 with smart home, smart offices to upgrade the Titan Center meeting room audio visual system for remote meetings.
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Hatfield. To recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of a contract for $9,175.04 with smart home, smart offices to upgrade the Titan Center meeting room audio visual systems for remote meetings. Additional discussion? All of us in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Let me public comment, at this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Ten open positions in the court. You have a jail stakeholders committee of government, so government looks at government as government. A new set of eyes might look at it differently. That consulting contract is a review of court programs. When's the best time to do a review and when's the best time to do cuts? When you can't fill the positions, 10 of them was said, you have a maintenance problem position, okay? So when's the best time to restructure? When you can't hire? So right now is a time for county government to look at how you need to restructure for the future. The jail stakeholder committee, you're, well, I guess it's been said at two different township meetings that they're looking at housing prisoners out of county. How well do you think that's going over right now? I was told that, well, we don't need public, you know, more or less, don't wanna derail this, I was told by a commissioner. Well, what's gonna derail it is the lack of public input throughout the whole system, throughout the whole committee meeting. Did you have a committee meeting? Was it posted? Are you running behind the people's back that you're supposed to represent? You know, it's pretty obvious to me, I believe you are, you don't know where you're going with a building that you're keeping and it's been vacant for three years, you don't know where you're going. That's the reason my FOIA came out today, I'm sitting there, you don't even know what you wanna put in there. I have ideas of what I want to see in there, came from one commissioner. Why do we have only ideas instead of, oh, here's the plan, so we know how to renovate it, if there's a need to renovate it? That's the bigger question. You want county offices, but you have availability in other places because you don't have employees that you can hire. You have contracts coming up, when's the best time to restructure? After a contract or before a contract? I guess I look at things a lot differently on this side than government looks on that side, and right now, I believe you're protecting government instead of saying, what is the best interest of the people of Berry County? That's, that's all it comes down to, why do I come, people say, you're just wasting your time coming in here. Well, it's a pretty good waste of time, it seems like today, because it needed to be said, and because more than one person said it.
Thank you.
It thinks something got done.
Additional public comment?
Larry Bass, Carrefour Center. Okay, here's some random thoughts, and believe me, they are random, but we had an opportunity to sell the FOC building a few years ago, correct? We chose not to, we chose to keep it. It sounds to me like we kept a white elephant. We've already spent $182,000 to put windows in it, potentially, from what I see here, there was another $490,000 potentially that would be spent to renovate it, and if I heard the chairman correctly earlier, there was a $950,000 figure in there someplace? We kept a white elephant. We should've sold it, we chose not to do it. My recommendation is, it's, it's, it's a, it's a black hole. It seems to me as a resident of the county that we're just gonna keep pouring money into this thing, and I don't see a concrete plan on what we plan on doing with it after we put this money into it, and frankly, that's disappointing. I would hope you would come out with a plan that we can at least hear at a commissioner's meeting, sometimes on what exactly we plan on doing with that building after we pour this money into it. I don't think that's an unreasonable request, and I'm, I'm also thought of a comment that was, or something was built in a movie I liked very much, if we build it, they will come. That's basically what I'm hearing here, so, how about getting a plan? And that, then I may or may not support it, right now, I can't agree with this, potentially spending this kind of money, it seems unreasonable. Also, I'm probably about a month late in bringing this up, but I would suggest that we all look at the definition of what a stakeholder is. A stakeholder is any individual that can be impacted by a decision, and so I, the stakeholder committee we have for the jail, I think that's a good start, but I do think you, you need to include other public members eventually on that, I don't see that happening. Also, an ad hoc committee, if you do, if you do an analysis of it, they generally fall under the Open Meetings Act, generally, so it just depends on if we rubber stamp the recommendations to come from that, that ad hoc committee or not. Frankly, I would like to see open meetings, I'd like to see minutes published, and if, potentially, have some sort of public comments in those meetings. Thank you for your time, and I approve this message.
Got you, Gary. Thank you, Larry. Additional public comment?
I can't stand up anymore.
Hearing no public comment, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Bassett?
Um, let's see, I, one thing coming up for me this week, and there's the Regional SWMB is gonna have a retreat coming up this Friday that I plan to attend, so, doing that, and then on a semi-personal note, several of us were able to go to a fundraising event for the, the Pennock Foundation in, in honor of Dr. Dagoa, who has set up an endowment for some educational materials and things for the birthing center at the hospital, and it was a wonderful event, and it was nice to have some fellow commissioners there and to, to be supportive of that in our community, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Getty?
Yankee Springs coming up this week, and don't forget, we have the Household Hazardous Waste Event on May 17th.
May 17th, Household Hazardous Waste.
If anyone would like to volunteer, volunteers are, you know, welcome to participate, there are plenty of tires and TVs to.
Tires and TVs.
High school kids do a good job with the tires, so I recommend the electronics.
There you go.
Unless it's an old TV set.
Right, well, then you get two or three, and we've got some strong guys helping there as well.
Commissioner Smelker?
I got the stats from 911, so far with, through April, we've had 17,573 calls, and it's up nine and a half percent from 24.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield?
Was in Grand Rapids for a Michigan Works Board meeting, good news is, so far, they have not seen any significant cuts in state or federal funding for their workforce development initiatives, activity is down somewhat, but that's a demand side issue, not a funding issue. Also had, as we've already talked about, the Planning Commission meeting resulted in the one action that we approved today, so.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell?
I'm just referring back to our drain commissioner's comments earlier today, I, I don't know a lot about the areas he was discussing there, but it sounded like maybe our drain commissioner was not being totally involved with things, and I think that he is, that is his position to be totally involved in runoffs and all that that's going on, it's such a huge project out there, I just wanna make sure that he's, continues to be a part of those decisions, 'cause he knows way more about it than, than most of us do, so, my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Tunis?
Regarding stakeholder for the jail, I think it's just gonna involve everybody that's, deals with it on a daily basis, that we need to sit down and see what the needs versus the wants are, and I think that's gonna be a big challenge, right? I mean, for the cost of a, a new jail in the 109 yards, it's gonna be looking at it a crackle away on top of what is actually needed there at the jail, so, and including the employees down there, including people from the courts, everybody else that, that deals with it on a daily basis, they'll have a good insight, and then we can bring it to the public and include the public. The public's not gonna be excluded from this in any way, we just need to sit down and come up with a plan first, so.
I agree. Thank you for attending this morning's meetings, I don't have anything to add to that, we are adjourned.